Good evening. The call is May 7, 2019, one hundred and twenty-four. And if you will please stand at the verification and then we'll have the presentation of the colors. Guess I should turn my microphone on. Then we'll have a presentation of the colors by West Brunswick High School.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together tonight and keeping us safe and grant us the wisdom to serve your children. In your name we pray. Amen.
Go ahead, Hester. Stand. Here it comes. Forward, march. Ready, right. Center, face. Read, say, march. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Forward, march. Center, face. Forward, march.
The first item we have is on public address, Ms. Melissa Sheridan. And I'm going to let our attorney just read the instructions for public addressing.
Good evening, Ms. Sheridan. My name is Rick Gray. And I'm reading to you from Policy 2310. It says presentations will be limited to five minutes per person or five minutes per organization. Discussions regarding particular individual employees, litigation, student records, or other matters which may be required to be kept confidential may not be discussed in open forum setting. The chairman will have the responsibility to determine matters of discussion that may be inappropriate and rule the speaker out of order if necessary. So welcome and please proceed with your public address.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, I have some paperwork. May I approach and share this? Thank you. Good evening. My name is Melissa Sheridan. This is my husband Bill. And we are parents to four children, ages fifteen, thirteen, eleven, and nine. We appreciate your time tonight as this can affect our students' lives for numerous years. A short time ago, we learned of a decision to require fifteen students in an AP class for an order, in order for an AP class to be held. AP courses are essential to our children to have a challenging curriculum and to be competitive when it's time to apply to college. Offering community college courses is not an acceptable replacement option. On your yellow sheet of paper you've received, you'll see where we called numerous universities, spoke to their admissions offices, and discussed the admission criteria with them. For many schools, students must take AP courses to be competitive. You'll see the comments that the admission officers said in regards to AP coursework. They preferred AP courses because of the national rigor and standardization. Additionally, many degree programs only accept freshmen and have required the AP statistics, physics, chemistry. Brunswick County currently offers less AP courses than many surrounding counties. When you look at your green piece of paper, you will see the offered courses at Pender, Columbus, New Hanover, and Wake County. Our students are not being given the same rigor that's offered 25 miles away. Many of these students have DEPs in place, the federal document stating that they should receive coursework that challenges their school level, their skill level. When you look at local AIG plans from numerous counties, AP courses is part of this DEP. We're the fastest growing county in North Carolina, yet our AP programming is shrinking. In surrounding counties, IB programs, AP programs, STEM programs, and academies are growing. At South, we have the potential to lose two AP courses at least this year. How can our children be competitive in a state, if, with the state colleges if we're not giving them their necessary tools? The current population of North is 1,500 students, West 1,200 students, and South approximately 1,000 students. However, the same minimum has been put in place for all schools despite the population discrepancies. Tonight, we ask of you several things. First and foremost, for the upcoming school year, please remove the fifteen student minimum from these courses. Please do not penalize the students that had planned to take courses their junior and senior years as they prepare for college. Before imposing any threshold, please take a thoughtful approach and come up with an alternative that would not penalize these students, such as virtual learning between the county high schools where one teacher could cover a single subject. Or have a proportionate minimum for these courses based on the population of the schools, such as a one-person rule. Let's look to expand our AP programming and opportunities. Let's be competitive with our surrounding counties. Let's continue to encourage our academically successful children and not put barriers to their success. Let's celebrate what's good and what's right and what's successful within these children. We also have several, another parent and several, I know we only have five minutes, but we have several students that wanted to speak as well, so.
Good evening. My name is Spring Richardson, and I'm the parent of a rising junior at South Brunswick High School. Over her freshman and sophomore years, she's developed a love of foreign language and completed Spanish I, II, III, and IV. While only three foreign languages are suggested by major colleges and universities, she and other students went on to complete Spanish IV due to their love of language. She's been blessed to have exemplary teachers such as Casey Smith and Stephanie Gamsby to facilitate her love of language. These teachers are champions for our children. Many students have crafted for several years their schedules to ensure they continue with Spanish through the AP level. We're now faced with the problem of the loss of our AP foreign language program across the board through all Brunswick County schools. While attending BCC to supplement the loss has been suggested, BCC course guides have been referenced. And our students have already covered these basic classes in prerequisite Spanish courses at South Brunswick. As a parent, educator, and supporter of Brunswick County schools, I respectfully request your assistance in bringing this program, along with other AP programs, back to our schools. Our children deserve our board, administration, and teachers to be their biggest advocates in education. It is our duty to provide ample opportunities in this competitive world. Thank you very much.
I just want to say this is not normal procedure. When one person is set for public address, it's usually just that one person. But I am going to allow you to go ahead and continue to speak.
Members of the board.
Let me just mention that of the five minutes allotted to the organization, there's only 32 seconds left.
I would greatly appreciate if I could have this time, sir. My name is Owen Bell. I'm a senior at South Brunswick High School. I'll be attending Wake Forest University in the fall of 2019. It's been brought to my attention that starting next year, there are proposed quotas that will need to be met in terms of the class size so that these AP courses can continue. Although I understand the purpose of setting a class size in the benefit of taking BCC and other college credit courses, it is equally important to understand why we need to keep these AP courses in Brunswick County schools. As a personal anecdote, the college I'll be attending does not accept community college courses as transfer credits. I also know this to be true for a plethora of other private schools and large public institutions across the nation. Limiting these AP courses would limit students to only community college courses that isn't even universally accepted, establishing the fact that this would in turn be huge disservice to students and their ability for college success. Furthermore, the rigor of these community college courses are not equal or viewed as equal to AP in the eye, in the eye of admissions reviewers of colleges and universities. While speaking with many academic advisors and students, I was told multiple times that those courses are viewed as easier course loads and grade inflators. Again, by limiting the student's ability to take AB courses, this will result in the hindering of their college application and ultimately college, college success. Lastly, I'd like to point out the headlining message at Brunswick County schools: producing college and career-ready graduates. Limiting these courses is a blatant disregard and undermining of this statement. So I plead and urge the board to please consider the importance of AP courses in allowing future graduates a chance to prepare and exceed in college and beyond. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, I know we don't usually make comment, but because this is such, and it is an important issue, and it's been in discussion for the last couple of months before, as the principals all met, and I don't have all the statistics and all the information, but I appreciate your information because both my children went to the early college and they were in a rigorous, rigorous situation with their, with their school. They both got accepted to college, they both went on to college, and in discussion with the counselors out there, they're, the kids from early college are getting accepted to Chapel Hill in places that are, you know, there was one fellow that had a full ride to MIT. So to me, to say it's not, everything's not challenging at the, at the community college, I don't totally understand that, but I understand that there are different, different aspects of AP classes. So we are continuing to look into it, and it's not so much that the principals have come together to decide, and we need to have the same consistency across the county with this. And saying that, we're still looking at trying to determine what the best outcome for every child in this county is. Not all of them are going to aspire to the same rigor as the others, but we are going to try to do everything we can. And it's not also that the principals have decided, but the state has a mandate on class sizes as well. So if there's any, we are going to look into this. Anything else that we, you know, Dr. Oats may, may some more comments about this.
Madam Chair, what we will do is we will go back to have something presented in committee in May regarding the AP status, but please understand that while we understand that the advanced placement courses are warranted, as a high school student, I took them myself, but we also must balance, I make sure our courses are balanced in our schools. And when we have a lot of students that are not taking AP classes, and then we have students that are, we want to make sure that one class is not held to a, a large number of students in the class, an excessive number of students in the class when you have other courses, such as AP courses, that do not. So we want to make sure that principals have the flexibility to offer as many courses as they can, but at the same time, offering all courses for all students. So as I said, we will come back in May at the committee meeting. I will have Mr. Cheers do another presentation to the board, and hopefully by that time, we can have a definitive answer as to how we can best approach this. We want to make sure we have all data. The data that was provided is, is good to have, and we want to make sure that we can verify everything and make the best decision for all students.
All right. The next item is Mr. Daniel Seaman's. It's all sorts of success in our school stories tonight. We're overloaded.
We are overloaded.
And I must say, we would have had refreshments if we knew so many people were going to be here. We've just never had such a big crowd at one time, so we're glad to have everyone here.
Yeah, I'm going to go through a couple successes, then we've got some more coming up after the first presentation. But first, Madam Chair, board members, colleagues, and BCF family, thank you for joining us this evening. First up, we want to talk about Brunswick County Early College High School. They have a quiz bowl team, and that quiz bowl team is pretty good. How good, you're asking? Well, they placed second in the North Carolina Association of Scholastic Activities Regional Quiz Bowl Competition. That qualifies you for the national competition. Okay? So now, they're going to be up against 320 teams from across the country. Early College is the only school in our area that's going to be competing on the national level. Other North Carolina teams are coming from areas like Charlotte and Raleigh, much bigger student populations. So dynamite comes in small packages, and the team travels to Atlanta, Georgia, May 24th, to compete in this two-day tournament. So their coach is here, and I would like to present her, Ms. Angela Jordan of Early College High School, also the Brunswick County High School Teacher of the Year at the county level. Angela, Ms. Jordan, if you would join me. Since the competition is May 24th, I'm hoping that this is a case of déjà vu, and she's back with the quiz bowl team as a national champion next month. So Angela, congratulations. Each year, each year, two North Carolina schools are recognized at the national level as a distinguished Title I school, two in the entire state of North Carolina. One of those two North Carolina schools is a Brunswick County school. Schools in the sustained high-performance category are recognized for showing a high of at least 80% level of student proficiency in reading and mathematics and making adequate yearly progress for the most recent two years. Union Elementary is the sustained high-performance school for the state of North Carolina, one of only two in the Tar Heel State to get recognized at the national level. And we are joined by Principal Vicki Smith and some more Dolphins to accept a token of appreciation for all their hard work.
Do you know how dolphins are when they travel to school?
So actually, you know, I'm just kind of a rule breaker. Can one minute?
Okay, that's fine.
So we appreciate this, we really do. And on behalf of the Union Dolphins, we also would like to say, we'd like to recognize you. Thank you to the Board of Education for all that you do for Union Elementary and all the other schools in our county. So this is just a little poster for you, a little reverse recognition.
Thank you.
Yeah, keep it interesting. And so we also brought you some pants, you know, of course.
Oh, yeah. Dolphins, Union, Dolphin love.
Union Elementary is the best. The sun's always shining at Union Elementary.
I knew that. The sun's always shining in Union, yeah.
And a new parade of thousands.
Thank you.
And keep up the good work. The sun is always shining.
The last thing I'll say is, and I've said it before, but this staff is the reason the sun shines at Union. They are awesome, so. Dolphin staff.
All right. All right, we do have some more successes coming up from our Teacher of the Year, but for now, I believe, it's time to move on to the presentations. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Dr. Oats, members of the school board, and the great crowd tonight. Thank you all for attending. Wonderful success stories to start tonight's meeting. My name is Kevin Hart. I am a sociologist, I am a social researcher, and for the last 10 years, I've been a TIMS project leader here in the state of North Carolina. TIMS is a statewide project focusing in all school districts on efficient school bus routing. North Carolina is very unique in that every county has the same school bus routing software. No other state in the country has that in every school district. It interacts with Power School, it allows us to pre-plan bus routes, measure ride time improvements, and tonight, how, what impact of potential school boundary changes or the opening of a new school would have on bus routes. My primary role at North Carolina State University is the, the lead trainer of our school bus routing software. We train 500 staff members from all across the state each year. Our school bus routing software is provided by Education Logistics, and the state of North Carolina has been in partnership with that company since the 90s. So a very well sort of established history. Tonight's presentation actually began several years ago that we'll look at here momentarily in anticipation of the new Town Creek Middle School that is set to open up in fall 2020. And so I'll just move on into this. And so tonight's presentation is sort of four sections. The first, I'm going to review the history and evolution of this particular project. Then we're going to look at potential boundary line adjustments for Belleville Elementary and Town Creek Elementary. And then from there, we're going to look at the potential enrollment at the new middle school that's opening and how that changes the enrollment at South Brunswick and at Leland Middle. And then lastly, we're going to finish up with a list of next steps and various decisions for the board and administration to make as you prepare to open this new middle school. So school, opening and closing schools is certainly a difficult conversation, and adjusting boundary lines have their own listed challenges, as I think you'll, you'll see here tonight. Now, before we get into the presentation, I do want to point out that it's important to understand that historically, nationwide and in North Carolina, a lot of times, school bus routes are often an afterthought of these types of decisions. There'll be a new school or a boundary line that's decided, and then transportation has to be more reactive than proactive. And, and so I do want to give kudos to Brunswick County schools as you're anticipating potential bus route changes with the new school coming onboard, and you're wanting to take a more innovative approach and look at the comprehensive impact of opening a new school and what that will have on the entire school system. Some of the things that we're going to look at tonight is building capacity, and the numbers presented in the, in the presentation reflect the capacity of the building itself and do not include the mobile classroom units and things like that that may sit outside the school. Please feel free to stop me and ask any questions along the way. So part one of this looks at the history and evolution of this project when you first approached us at the Institute for Transportation, Research, and Education. In addition to training folks on the school bus routing software, ITRI also does a number of other products and services related to school systems. They can help identify optimal site selection for the building of a new school. If you're looking to adjust boundary lines, as, as is the case tonight, we can provide assistance there. If you're looking to conduct public focus groups or survey the community about these potential impacts, we're welcome to assist with that, as well as establishing walk zones or bike lanes, you know, to sort of promote a healthier lifestyle as well. So it's more than just putting kids on a school bus or adjusting boundary lines, there's a, a whole variety of services related to school transportation and, and school site selection. So the initial request from Brunswick County first came to me in 2017, in the fall semester, so over a year and a half ago. And the initial request was to look at potential boundary lines for the new Town Creek Middle. And the focus of that was to alleviate the overcrowding at Leland Middle and South Brunswick, and to utilize all the new available seats that are going to be available at the new Town Creek Middle. And in addition to that, we were planning on looking at the impact to the bus routes. Would buses have to be added? Would it change the current operation? Would student ride times go up or down, and how dramatically? Also, looking at cost projections, daily driver payroll hours, annual miles traveled, fuel costs. So it's a very comprehensive look at what impact this new school will have. And so the initial results of the potential boundary lines for the new Town Creek Middle were developed just over a year ago, and we had some meetings internally. And before moving forward with looking at the potential bus routes, came the question of the new bell time at the Town Creek Middle School, which is a little bit different because currently, most of your middle and high schools are on one bell tier schedule together. Because they're in close proximity, those children can ride together, and the elementary sort of rides standalone. But because Town Creek Middle is going to be located at Town Creek Elementary, it would make sense for those children to be bused together K to eight for transportation efficiency. And so then came the question of, well, which bell tier would those two schools go on? Would you put the middle school on the elementary times, or would you put Town Creek Elementary on the middle and high tier to sort of maintain your bus route efficiency? And so the initial plan was for ITRI, my group, to receive a response to that last fall, and we were going to prepare the bus routes and some more information, probably for the, after Thanksgiving. But unfortunately, a natural disaster occurred. Hurricane Florence struck the first part of September, and this particular project was put on hold. The team sort of reconvened in December and January and sort of set the next steps, and that's really how I'm here tonight, so. And so the original request was just to develop potential boundary lines for the middle school, but as we revisited the scopes of, of the project, it was brought to our attention that there were some overcapacity issues at Belleville Elementary. And could the boundary lines be adjusted to help fill up Town Creek that did have available seats? And if so, how would those boundary line changes then affect the opening of the new Town Creek Middle School? So we sort of had to take a step back and revisit the elementary information before taking a look at the middle school. And so this is sort of part two of the presentation, as we look at a proposed boundary line adjustment for Belleville Elementary to alleviate overcrowding and to help fill up the available seats at Town Creek Elementary. This particular section, we're going to cover five different parts. We're first going to look at the current enrollment at both of these schools, and I do want to point out that this date is from March 8th of this year, so it's just about two months old. We've sort of done analysis over the past couple of months on this. We're also going to talk about the transfer students, the children that may live outside of the boundaries, and where they're allowed to be re-enrolled into those schools. And then we're going to look over the different reassignment options based upon the proposed boundary lines. So to begin, as we look here, I want you to notice is that Belleville is around 109% full, and again, this is by the building capacity, it doesn't include the, the mobile units. And 96% of those children live inside the current Belleville boundary, with about 32 students are around 4% of the total enrollment living outside the district. You'll see Town Creek is at 88% building capacity, and they have a slightly higher out-of-bound enrollment percentage at 11%. And then in addition to those, there are 70 students that live outside of both of these current attendance zones that are enrolled at one of these two schools. So there are 70 kids coming from outside of these areas, and then there's an additional 33 kids that live inside the bounds that attended different elementary. So you have some kids in and out of the posted attendance zones. Now, these children are referred to as transfer students in speaking with their staff, and predominantly, they're staff children. There are enrollment exceptions made for the children of staff to attend certain schools, and there may also be some special needs program placements, and so children are allowed to cross attendance lines due to special circumstances. And then given the hurricane, there may be some displaced students who've had to move to another section of the county that have been able to remain in school. So these transfer students add a whole nother level of complexity when you're just looking how many children live inside this zone or that's it.
Those students' capacities include HP13s?
I'm not sure these capacity numbers were provided by BCS. I'm not sure of the exact.
It does.
It does. Thank you, sir. And so our two options, as we look at potential enrollment under a boundary line adjustment, the first would be if we only looked at students that currently attend those two schools, and if we reassigned them based upon these new lines. And then the second set of enrollment numbers would be, well, if we, every child who lives inside the boundaries, if we had them reassigned to these schools. So you'll see slight differences depending upon the reassignment options. But before we do that, we do need to talk about the proposed boundary line adjustment. This image here on the left is a picture of the current Town Creek Elementary boundary as well as the Belleville Elementary boundary. And you can see the Belleville boundary sort of has this little peninsula that sort of follows Down River Road there. And that area is adjacent to the Town Creek Elementary boundary, and it is in close proximity for transportation purposes to that school as well. And so in looking at the boundaries for the potential middle school, this area, Mallory Creek, was identified as the, the prime candidate for redistricting into Town Creek Middle. And so, in looking at the boundaries for the potential middle school, this area, Mallory Creek, was identified as the prime candidate for redistricting into Town Creek Middle. But this causes potential problems as it wasn't currently districted for the elementary. So, the question became, as we were trying to alleviate the overcrowding in Belleville and use the available seats at Town Creek, was, well, if we brought all of Mallory Creek or part of Mallory Creek into Town Creek Elementary, what would that do for the elementary enrollment, as well as the projected middle school? In addition to the Mallory Creek area, there is a smaller neighborhood just south of that Along River Road. I believe there's less than 20 students in that area total. And so, just for efficiency and transportation purposes, that neighborhood would also be redistricted into Town Creek Elementary. However, there's a lot of children in this Mallory Creek area, and there's a very sort of natural break within this sub-development that sort of splits the northern section from the southern section. Whoops, excuse me. And so, here, within that area, there is a sand dune, there's a hillside, and a tree line that puts a clear break between the northern and southern streets that actually works as a very nice natural barrier, which is a very common practice when deciding county lines, state lines, and school boundary lines. It's something you can easily communicate, you know, north of this street, south of the sand dune sorts of areas. Here are some street-level shots within the neighborhood. You can see the tree line there. There's a break where the road occurs, and then the sand dune continues. So, it's very clear to the eye if, I believe, local staff went out and scouted this area and determined that that would be a great sort of natural break. And so, the image on the left really identifies the section of the Belleville, the current Belleville District that would be moved to the Town Creek Elementary District. And here, there are currently, as of March 8th, 158 Belleville Elementary students within this red area. And so, that would succeed in alleviating the overcrowding at Belleville Elementary, while almost immediately filling up Town Creek Elementary, which was one of the initial goals of this project. And so, here are those two different potential school capacity estimates that I spoke about. The top chart being if we only reassigned the children currently enrolled in that school that live within the boundaries. And you would see Belleville would drop from, it was at 110% full currently, down to 87. And then, Town Creek would get full at 103%. Again, this is of the building capacity. And notice that all these children are within these newly defined boundary lines. Now, if we take it a step further, and we looked at all elementary students living in these two districts, and we reassigned children if they lived in neither one of these, Belleville would get slightly fuller at 93%, while Town Creek would, you know, get a hefty bit fuller at 111% of that building capacity. So, I think the transfer students currently play into these two different numbers. Now, some districts have allowed students, if you only have a year or two left, to stay in that school and sort of be grandfathered out, and then you can enforce the new lines with the new enrollees. There's a number of methods there. I don't want you to think that these numbers are hard. Now, in looking at potential enrollment for this coming August, at the time when I started this data analysis, the final kindergarten enrollment was not yet available. So, I looked at the last five years of each of the schools and came up with an estimated range of how many children could be anticipated at the kindergarten level. And I'll actually just flip over to the next slide that's got all the raw numbers. So, here, again, this would be only the children currently enrolled, as well as the projected newcomers. And so, based upon a low average and high range of potential kindergarteners, Belleville would range anywhere from 87% full up to 90%, while Town Creek would be 99% full up to 104, which really sort of achieves the initial goal of, again, alleviating the overcrowding and then using the additional seats at Town Creek Elementary. Now, if we look to reassign all students that would live within the new boundaries, you would see Belleville would range from 93% up to 96% full, while Town Creek would be 107 up to 112%. So, again, those transfers, and you can see the impact of those additional students. Any questions here? Okay. Now, I do want you to understand, it's very difficult to find the magic neighborhood that's going to have the perfect number of children to sort of make these capacities match. And not only that, but students move throughout the year, sometimes multiple times throughout the year, over the summer. And so, honestly, average daily membership is a fluid number that changes monthly, weekly, each semester. Now, shifting into part three of this presentation, how would these proposed boundary line adjustments impact the opening of the Newtown Creek Middle? And what would that do to the current capacities at Leland Middle and South Brunswick? And so, same thing, we're going to start by looking at the current enrollment of both of the two middle schools that are open. We're going to look at the out-of-boundary students at the middle school level, which is not as significant as we saw at the elementary. And then, I want to discuss some school population trends that I think you'll see when we look at the final projected enrollment here. So, to begin with, as we look at the current population, again, from March 8th, just about two months ago, Leland Middle has 954 students with a building capacity, again, of 600. So, it is very, very full with a lot of mobile units there. So, obviously, you can see this is why the new middle school is coming onboard, is, you know, you need available seats. And then, same thing for South Brunswick Middle, they're at 126%. So, you're about 508 seats over the current capacities of both schools. And Town Creek Middle, I think, has 560 seats dedicated to it. So, that right there alleviates your overcrowding problem. Now, in terms of the transfers, again, it's not as significant here. About 3% of the Leland children live outside of the current boundary, and about 3% of South Brunswick students. And in terms of the other children that live and do not attend these, it's, again, it's about a 3% group. The boundary line, with Town Creek Elementary being on the same campus as Town Creek Middle, it first makes sense for those two schools to share the same boundary, so that it's a pure feeder pattern. If you're in Town Creek Elementary, you automatically go to the middle. Now, the problem is, that doesn't fill up Town Creek Middle. And so, now, we're looking to possibly expand the middle school boundaries in order to use all the available seats at that school. So, we're going to have the base boundary from Town Creek Elementary, as we discussed. And so, here on the left is the current middle school boundaries. You can see Leland there at the top, and the large South Brunswick District. And then, this image on the right would be the new Town Creek Middle School District as it sort of comes in the middle of both of those. But before we look at potential population and enrollment projections, I do want to discuss the overall population trend in Brunswick County. And so, currently, Brunswick is in the middle of a middle school population boom. As the enrollment numbers by grade show, from grades five to 10, there's over 1,000 students per grade level, which is why the current middle schools are so overcrowded. But if you look at the elementary population, that will basically be a middle school in, you know, three to five years, there's less total aggregate students. So, the current capacity issues you have are not going to be as significant moving forward as the population appears to be declining. Now, this may be a natural birth rate population, may have something to do with charter schools and private schools, and other folks taking students. But the trend is clear that there's less kids coming in the future years. Now, for our two projections here for the middle school, I approached it the same way. There are six elementary schools, excuse me, that what I would call are feeder schools to either Leland Middle or South Brunswick Middle. And so, if children are currently in one of those six schools and live within the new middle school lines, they would, projected to be reassigned to those locations. And then, the second set would be, well, regardless of what elementary they currently attend, if they're in the new boundaries, how would those numbers look? So, here, this first is only reassigning the feeder school children. And you can see just, and again, this is using just that Town Creek Elementary boundary that we went over. It does succeed in dropping Leland Middle from close to 160% down to 113. And it dropped South Brunswick, that was at 126%, down to 99. And so, the first year of Town Creek, fall 2020, that school would be at around 69% of its capacity. Now, the beauty of doing this for the middle schools is that we have elementary children plotted on the map and populated, so we were able to extrapolate the enrollment capacity for the first five years after Town Creek is open. And so, you'll see the Brunswick population, the South Brunswick population is on that sort of clear decline, while the Leland population holds pretty steady at around 112. And after the first year or so, Town Creek holds steady at around 60%. So, what this says is, well, we don't really want to take too many more kids from South Brunswick, right, as their population is sort of going through a natural drop. But if we can extend the middle school boundary into the Leland area, it would help alleviate their overcrowding while also utilizing all seats at your new middle school. The next slide shows if we reassigned all students that would be in the middle school grades when the school opens. And the numbers are very, very similar. Leland would hold steady at around 110%, and the others would hold 77 and around 60 for Town Creek. And here are those sort of two projections side by side. I guess the key takeaway point is that over the first five years, Leland has, is overcapacity by about 50 to 75 students. And Town Creek Middle has 180 to 200 seats available. So, we need to try to explore extending the middle school lines to alleviate the overcrowding at Leland and bring some more bodies into Town Creek Middle. We did not go much further than this because there's been a lot of data to absorb and a lot of scenarios to think through. But we did do some just preliminary look, and so, if we did absorb the northern part of the Mallory Creek development, I believe it's called Westport, that was sort of our cutoff line at the elementary, those children could go to Town Creek Middle. And then, we could expand the boundary slightly here along the adjacent zone. And just by doing this purple area here, this would pull another 10 to 30 students per year over those first five years from Leland. And in speaking with Brunswick County staff, there are also a number of new housing developments set to come in in this purple area. And so, if you could go on and redistrict that to Town Creek Middle now, that would prevent future crowding at Leland by going on and sending those kids down to Town Creek where there are plenty of seats available. Does that make sense? So, this sort of leads us to the final section, is the next steps and decisions that are needed as you prepare to open that new school. And so, first, we need to settle on the new boundary lines, if any, for Belleville Elementary and Town Creek Elementary, and give some consideration to those student transfer requests, as those will sort of play into the true final enrollment numbers at both of those schools. And then, once those boundary lines are determined, we can look at how that will impact the populations at Leland, South Brunswick, and the Newtown Creek Middle. And then, from there, the decision of the bell times for the Town Creek Middle is going to need to be determined for our school bus efficiency. My recommendations, as a transportation expert, if you will, I don't say that a lot. I think either the middle school should be on the same tier as the elementary, so you can bus those K-8 together, or that elementary could sort of be the oddball, and it could be on the same bell tier as the middle and high. I think that's where you're going to see the most cost savings from your transportation dollars. A third option would be to bus them separately and keep them on their own tier. I do believe without, again, without doing the work, it would lead to inefficiencies, half-full buses, possibly having to add buses to the road, which can have some negative impacts on your state transportation dollars. But that's the beauty of this TIM system, is that it allows for scenario testing. So, you know, we could develop bus routes five years from now, if needed, by promoting kids and making some estimates on who may or may not ride. So, there are ways to take all of these different scenarios we talked, plan bus routes under each of them, and truly see what the impact, ride time, cost savings, fleet size would be to these decisions. And again, it may be different pots of money, but in the end, it's all taxpayer dollars, right? And so, we're just trying to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars across the board entirely. That really completes the work I've done for over a year and a half on this particular project, and happy to take any questions or anything.
The MOOCod was not included in Leland's capacity bracket, and it's considered a mobile unit, even though it's a really nice one.
That's correct. Ms. Cook, may I be recognized?
Please, yes.
As you all could see, this is a lot of detailed information, and it's good information. So, the plan that staff has right now is to take all this information that we have and take the comments that we got from, you know, the public comment period that we had, and then to develop a timeline and bring back to the board for making these decisions that were outlined in step number four. So, that's our next step. I appreciate you coming down, Kevin, and going through the information. I hope that that will help all of us, you know, kind of realize where the information comes from, and help us formulate a understanding and future questions as we continue to go down this path of defining these boundaries.
Any other questions or anything? Thank you for the exhaustive report.
I apologize.
No, I mean, really, because, I mean, that's what, this is what people want to know.
Correct.
I mean, it is involved, it is extensive, and it's, and, you know, at least where they understand it's not just something we came up with overnight.
No.
It's very involved, it's very time-consuming, and it's very, I mean, you're looking at a lot of different scenarios. And it does affect, it affects our population.
Absolutely.
It affects all the families in this area. So, I appreciate all your time and effort. And yes, Ms. Rutledge, we definitely recognize, head of our operations, because she's behind the scenes of all this. And Bobby Taylor, who's out here as well, in our Transportation Department, because that all plays in to the big picture. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would ask that this plan be put on the, our website maybe for the public to...
Can we do that slide presentation on there? Okay.
Yeah, there's no identifying...
No rights or anything, okay.
Anything like that.
Thank you so much.
...to the public so they can start viewing it.
Right, thank you. All right. And now, without any further ado, our teacher's voice, Claire Harrington. She's loaded down, lots of goodies.
I'm going to give you an opportunity to stretch in just a minute. First, I'd like to start off with the Brunswick County Community Engagement Project. This was a chance for teachers to open the doors to their classroom to local community leaders for a special collaborative experience. I'd like to invite Dr. Oates, if you would, come down and help me hand these out. I know that a few schools had events tonight and aren't going to be able to attend, so we'll just, we'll, if there's a representative from each school, we'll have those people come up, and if not, we'll send them, to them later. Leaders of our community were invited to experience a day in the life of a teacher to spark questions and discussion on how schools can best serve our community and how our community can help serve our schools. The purpose of this project is to build bridges between community stakeholders and school employees to drive collaborative relationships and spark innovative opportunities for teachers, students, and community members. When we asked for all hands on deck, these teachers were able to answer the call. First, from Supply Elementary was Jessica Lavassa, and the community member that was able to attend was Commissioner Marty Cook. Is there a representative from Supply today? Anyone?
I can just, can I just personally say, he thoroughly enjoyed himself?
That's wonderful.
I will say that.
So... So from Shiloh Middle School, we have Leah Freer and Jenny Jones, who I know is teaching a homebound student right now, and their community...
She's about, she's here. She's here. So she's here.
And their community member was Jean Vassil, Shiloh Alderman.
And Chip Kirby, manager of Sharkey.
And Chip Kirby, yes.
Hi, Ellen. Here's Lee Freer.
Hello. Thank you.
Do we get the persons?
Come on and stand up here, we'll take a group picture of you.
Okay.
Yes. I'll get that one to you. From Union Elementary, we have Jada Fimbill, Tara Cumby, Jennifer Adcock, and Becky Hewitt, and their community member was Daniel Russ of JP Russ &amp; Son. We have Jill Carter, and their community member was Rebecca Allen from the Brunswick County Sheriff's Office. And then Patricia Howard, Dawn Longmiller, and Amanda Cutrell, and their community member was Justin Cutrell from ATMC. And then I know Virginia Williamson had two school events tonight, but if we have one member from Virginia Williamson to come up, we can, we can hand them off. Wonderful. We had Beth DeHaro, Vicki Burris-Hall, Christina Harden, Kelly Howchin, Anne Vereen, Amber Copeland, Cindy Evans, Mallory Furlough, Caitlin White, Tricia Huggins, and William LaFerr, who, and our community members were Lucinda Arnold from South Coast, Oak Island Board of Directors and Coastal Painting and Improvements, Carolyn Scott from Scott Photography, and Bill Negron from the United Methodist Church in Shiloh. It's the whole rest of that bubble right there. So if we could give a round of applause to those who...
Dr. Oates? Oh, there we go. You got it. Perfect, perfect, all right. In three, two, one, there we go. Thank you.
Next, we have our Service Above Self Awards. And if, I'm going to let the, I'm going to call them all up because we have April and Mays, and then I'll call the board to come down and shake hands at the end. For those of you that don't know, the Service Above Self Award is for any employee who goes above and beyond the call of duty and demonstrates service above self in the course of their responsibilities. We extend our gratitude for your exemplary dedication of your time and talents for the betterment of Brunswick County schools. Our first recipient is Charlene Clark and Elizabeth Schmidt. This is a team nomination from Bolivia Elementary School. These ladies, if you would, come on up. These ladies bring many leadership opportunities to their students through the Students Council Program. In leading these groups, they teach students about community and how best to serve in our community. Students also learn formal procedures for meetings with established norms and expectations, as well as how to work collaboratively as part of a larger group. These two fine educators serve as Bolivia Elementary community, serve the Bolivia Elementary community and beyond. Thank you, ladies. Next, we have Jane Grey Browning. Ms. Browning tackles each day with great energy at Waukamaw. She is the first to volunteer to attend meetings and always provides insightful input. She makes all employees feel valued and maintains a high standard of excellence for learning, leadership, and character for all students and staff. She's a valuable asset to our school and the epitome of service above self. Just stand over here, it'll be all right. Next, we have Callie Hodgson. Callie does a masterful job at juggling all that's on her plate at South Brunswick Middle School. As CIS Success Coach, she mentors and tutors with students. She provides support and monitors the progress of at-risk population. She leads peer court as well as Rachel's Challenge, empowering students to be leaders among their peers. She's an innovative thinker and problem solver who goes the extra mile for our staff, students, and parents. Thank you, Callie. Next, we have Stephanie Gansby. As the World Languages Department Chair at South Brunswick High, Stephanie is a true linguist and literary expert that pushes her department and students daily. She goes out of her way to form lasting relationships with her students and their families that last beyond graduation by keeping in touch with her students and inviting many families to her home for home-cooked meal gatherings. Having taught AP and upper-level courses for years, she is a fearless advocate of all students at South Brunswick and promotes the advantages of second language learning within our school and community. She's a highly efficient, fun-loving, and superb professional. She embodies the South Brunswick motto of "Set the Standard for All Who Know and Work With Her." Thank you, Stephanie. Next is Letitia Kirby. Ms. Kirby is an excellent teacher leader who mentors many teachers with North Brunswick High School. She is extremely knowledgeable in her field of science as well as technology. Ms. Kirby collaborates with many teachers during her planning time and assists students and staff with one-on-one sessions to help problem solve and master any concepts where they may be struggling. She is one person at North you can count on for being willing to help. Thank you, Letitia. In the short time Ms. Skipper has been Administrative Assistant at Virginia Williamson, she has become a staple at our school. She hit the ground running, becoming the go-to person by being a superb multitasker and placing the needs of students first. By being proactive and positive, she is very deserving of being honored for service above self. I know they have many events today. Next is Chanel Calder. Ms. Calder is the third grade chair at Union Elementary School. She facilitates weekly lesson planning, PLCs, prepares for monthly beginning teacher meetings, and directs an annual Christmas play. She serves as Science Olympiak coach as well as participates in the Fall and Spring Running Club. Ms. Calder loves to sing and dance and brings laughter and joy to the staff and students at Union daily. Thank you, Ms. Calder. Next, we have Danielle Platt. Danielle serves as the EC Chair, PTO Chair, as well as the EC Resource Teacher at Belleville Elementary School. She helps with organizing fundraisers, family nights, reviewing files, helping with IEPs, taking pictures, advocating for students, and building relationships with the students and parents throughout the school. She gets to school early and stays late and is always ready to give advice or help. I've heard she never sleeps. Thank you, Danielle. Next, we have Erin Cook. Ms. Cook works as a speech pathologist for West Brunswick, Shiloh, Shiloh Middle, and Waukamaw. She enters the building and selflessly checks on teachers and staff. She is always ready to help in any way she can, never judges, and prepared to always share a kind word. She cares for her students immensely and pushes them to reach their goals. She easily turns negatives around for her students to see the bright side, and they light up when they see her. She is constantly putting others before herself and brings joy to all she works with. Thank you, Erin. And last but not least, we have Crystal Patton. Every morning, Ms. Patton has a smile on her face and treats every student with love and dignity at North Brunswick High School. She is willing to assist in every aspect of the classroom and works in the Exceptional Children's Department. She is innovative and an incredible artist. She modifies art techniques for all types of learners, and she looks for solutions and is always willing to help in any given situation. So, thank you, girl, thank you. We're going to take a picture, but another round of applause for all those. And if the board would come, join us.
All right, I want to do another, something a little unorthodox. I've learned since the public address that there's two more students that might still be here that wanted to speak about the AP classes, and I'm going to allow you five minutes between the two of y'all, if that's okay. So I will call either Liz Bolt and Athena Wells, if you're here, if y'all would like to speak. Since you're prepared, we don't want to leave you out.
Hello, and thank you for letting us allow a couple extra minutes for my classmate and me speak. Good evening, my name is Liz Bolt. I'm a sophomore at South Brunswick High School. I've recently been inducted into the National Honor Society. I'm a representative of student government. I'm the elective vice president for Key Club, and I am the secretary of International Studies Club. I am speaking on behalf of the students at South who support keeping AP Spanish. Currently, eight students are registered for AP Spanish for 2019 to 2020 school year. This falls short of the 15 required to keep this important class. I will highlight two reasons why AP Spanish is important to retain. First, one school I intend to apply to is University of Chapel Hill, at, University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, where the average number of AP courses in the undergraduate class is six to 10. My counselors told me numerous times to identify subjects I excel in and create clusters in certain areas to demonstrate proficiency. I plan to take AP Spanish my senior year and help me differentiate myself as an applicant at UNC Chapel Hill. Second, I intend, I intend to work into, I intend to work in an international field, such as international relations, foreign affairs, or international relief, and I will need to be fluent in at least one other language besides English. Brunswick County Schools' mission, like Owen from earlier said, the mission is to produce college and career-ready students. Please do your duty of ensuring no student is left behind or falls short of aspiring to the college of their choice or future careers.
Hello, my name is Athena Wells. I'm also a sophomore at South Brunswick, and I would like to start off with the U.S. Department of Education's mission, which is to promote student achievement and preparation for global competitiveness by fostering educational excellence and ensuring equal access to education. With this, I ask you, is this plan actually preparing us for global competitiveness and ensuring us equal access to education by denying us some of the few AP classes that are offered just because we cannot reach the 15-student expectation? How is limiting our choices of these classes going to prepare us for the very competitive educational world? Yes, the community college is a route we could take during high school, and that choice is readily available to us. However, many of us want to go to prestigious colleges that are in or out of state and which AP classes are sought after way more than community college classes are because of the difficulty level. With this decision, you will be limiting our choices of these classes, therefore making us less competitive and setting us up for failure. I hope you can reconsider your decision as you are in control of our future. And I would also like to say thank you for allowing us this time to speak to you about this, as this is very important to us. So, thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Do I have approval of the meeting agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Benton makes a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second, Ms. Milligan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have approval of the minutes from the April 2nd Regular Meeting, the April 16th Operations Committee Meeting, April 16th Curriculum Policy Committee Meeting, April 16th Budget Work Session Committee, and April 23rd Special Called Meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve such minutes? Mr. Miller makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Benton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have consent items for approval.
Motion to approve.
All right, Mr. Miller?
Second.
Mr. Lemon, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we have some action items. Ms. Rutledge, I'd like to recognize you.
Mr. Ecker has...
Mr. Ecker, I'd like to recognize Mr. Ecker, all right.
Good evening. Tonight I have for your consideration a number of different contracts. First contract being with Integrity Builders in the amount of $66,721 to construct a canopy outside the 400 Building at Bolivia.
Any questions?
Which building is that? I'm trying to, which building, if you're facing the scores?
The contractor is Integrity Builders.
No, which building is that?
It is the one that runs Langkwise adjacent to the Day Treatment Building.
Oh, okay.
It's where the kids stack up for the buses.
Right.
Inside the building.
Motion to approve.
I request, request approval of this.
Motion to approve.
All right, Mr. Milligan.
Second.
Ms. Milligan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, second item.
Item number two is a contract with REI Engineers to provide design and construction support services for the re-roofing of Union and sections of Bolivia Elementary School. Contract is in the amount of $101,000. We did use a, we issued a statement of qualifications, and we had two people submit, and we selected REI, negotiated a price with them.
This for new roofs? What is this for? For new roofs?
It's, yes, for new roofs.
Are we due any money for Bolivia Elementary's roof from FEMA?
We, we got money from the state for Bolivia and for Union, and also some other schools too.
Storm-related roof.
Yes, sir, yes.
Motion, we approve REI Engineering for this project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the third?
Okay, the next, next item, item number three, deals with the bond work, which will commence construction July of 2020. It is, we have two architects and two construction manager at Risks, and we, we've split, we've grouped the projects so that the additions at North and West will be designed by Becker Morgan Group, and the construction manager at Risk will be WM Jordan. The other projects are, is replacement of the K-12 Building and/or classrooms at Waukamaw, and also some CTE improvements at the coast. Those CTE improvements will be an automotive technology career center and also a culinary arts career center. And this is all scheduled to begin construction in July of 2020. We need to start the design process now to meet those deadlines. And the contractor amounts are indicated on the agenda, and we're requesting that the Board of Education forward these to the County Commission, County Commissioners for execution, as it is all bond money.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, I'm, I'm in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. All right, now discussions and announcements. Superintendent. Dr. Oates.
As you can see on the agenda, I just want to bring attention to the bottom where we are definitely in our season of graduation, the opening and the closing of the school years, most exciting times, and we want to just make sure that everyone is aware of the times and dates of the graduations that will be taking place in May and in June. So we want to, if you are unable to attend, please let Ms. Coughlin know, but we are looking forward to having all of you, all of you there on those days. Secondly, in reviewing the board minutes from our last board meeting, one of the things that was brought up in discussion by Mr. Lemon was the establishing of a mechanism or a platform in which we could have conversation, open conversation and dialogue with parents. In thinking about that and having conversation... And thinking about that and having conversation with cabinet in our weekly meeting, one of the ways we wanted to propose this to you for thought and possibly discussion is having what I've called an executive board of our PAC committee, PAC groups in our different, in our nineteen schools. What this would basically comprise of, you're looking at taking the nineteen PAC presidents from all of the schools and among themselves, electing two representatives from each region. This executive board then would meet with me and my staff with an agenda that they may contribute to as well as the staff would contribute to, all of this facilitated by Mr. Siemens, our Public Information Officer. Board members would not be required to attend, however, if any of you at any time wanted to attend any of those executive board meetings, you're more than welcome to do that. But we wanted to give, we've, we've heard the plea of many parents wanting to have dialogue with me, with my staff, and with board members. So in doing an executive board, that was our idea of thinking that we could kind of make sure that that was put in place. And again, this is for your consideration, and as we kind of firm up how this would go, we would look at bylaws and those types of things, expectations and norms that this could be facilitated with ease. So I just wanted to bring that to you.
Can we bring it back up at committee meeting?
Most certainly. And by that time, we could definitely firm up some other things.
Okay. All right. All right, any other board members, any comments? All right, if that's the case, does anyone want to make a motion to go into closed session?
I make a motion, we enter closed session.
Mr. Benton, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.